Good morning. We'd like to welcome you to the Mesa City Council Study Session for the morning of Thursday, April the 28th. We are all here with the exception of Ms. Spilsberry, who was traveling and is excused. The first item on our agenda for this meeting is to review the agenda we have for our Monday, May the 2nd, meeting. So let's go through that. I know staff has a couple of presentations on a -- Parks question and a zoning question, Mr. Brady, is that right?
Yes, Mayor. I -- we have a presentation just to kind of give a little more information to council. I think item 4A and 4F related to parks. So Mark's gonna -- Beth will help out with that one.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. Andrea is out of town today, so it's back to the future for me. See if I remember how to do this. First one is 4A. This is an increase to the contract. We have some extra funding to address some large projects through facility maintenance, but that -- and that division has pre-qualified general contractors. So this is a request to increase those contracts so we can address these large projects. Three in particular. Two at the plaza. The first one is exterior work at $2.3 million, starting in June and going through this winter. It'll include cleaning all of the copper on the exterior of the building, resealing the windows, exterior painting and stucco repair, and then doing a consistent window film installation all across every window of that building. There's some that have it, some that don't. They don't match those that are there, so we're gonna make that all look consistent and go all the way across that building. And to our records, we can't recall the last time that copper was cleaned.
I can tell you, I was on City Council.
Was it 1990s?
It was in the 1990s.
Yeah. Well, you can tell it's aged quite a bit.
Much like the restrooms, these haven't been touched since 1996.
Well, what could you do to those restrooms to make them any better?
Well, it got expensive to touch the tile and some of the other things, so we're gonna address the countertops, the faucets, the fixtures, lighting, painting. The stalls will stay the same and fixtures, but this is a...
I know change is difficult, but...
$294,000, $295,000 project. We'll start again this summer and go throughout the next year. You can see those conditions that we talked about on the copper on the exterior of the building. And then the solid surface countertops we're picking and just going straight white on the ceilings and cleaning those all up to be consistent. And again, updating the lighting throughout the building as well. Last big project is...
Mark, before you move on, and number one, the city plaza is obviously long overdue for some sprucing up, so that's great. But -- and I know we're marching forward on the council chambers on the corner, and those are two separate projects, right? When we do the council chambers, we're not gonna say, "Oh gee, we're kind of messing with what we just spruced up on the -- sit on the tower."
Because that tower really is separated from the building, literally. So, I mean, we're gonna try to keep it somewhat connected, but they'll... And just also with the opening, with the issue building and all the other things that are happening on the block, we didn't want to be the one kind of...
We're noticeably not...
We haven't kept up our maintenance, so...
Okay. Sorry. Thank you. Any other questions on the city plaza building? Thank you, Mark.
Last one is some fence repair around the perimeter of the Dobson Ranch Golf Course. The city retains the ownership of those exterior fences and those perimeter fences. There are 13 locations that are just beyond repair at this point, so we're gonna go in there at one shot and do some block wall replacements, some of the column replacements, and then the fence panels and some gate replacement. And then after this, we'll add $50,000 annually to keep up with sections and make sure we stay ahead of this for the future. Any questions on that one?
Doesn't appear so.
I have a quick question on the golf course. It's kind of related. How are things going with the new contracts we have?
Great. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmember Horedeia can attest to this as well. The reception has been great. The partnership with Paradigm has been fantastic. Our rounds are up. They've made some significant investments in the course, in the operations. Customers are happy. The driving range improvements that they've made with the Top Golf Experience and the simulators is outstanding. The food services have been greatly improved. So we couldn't be more pleased of that partnership and how that's going. And I'd like Councilmember Horedeia, if he's heard anything from his district.
Positive. They've been good stewards of, you know, donating golf clubs to youth camps. And so it's not only the -- on the golf course, we've seen more activity, but definitely in the community, they've been actively engaged in helping out New Leaf and other partners. And so it's been a positive reception so far, so...
Good to hear. I'm glad that we're making these investments to further enhance the golf course.
Thank you.
So Mayor, now we're gonna move to 4F? Now we'll bring the A-team in. Wow. That was the warm-up. That was the warm-up, sorry.
Sorry, Mark. Numbers better.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. I have with me on my left, you know, Mark Hersberg. Our deputy city manager is pinch-hitting for Andrea, Parks Department. But not to worry, Andrea's back next week, so...
Right.
And to my far left is Jesse Sims. It's his first time up here with you.
Good morning.
He is our Assistant Library Services Director. And we're here to talk to you about item 4F, Monterey Park. It's probably been a long time coming for Councilmember Thompson, but we're here and we're ready to bring our first construction contract forward. So you may... It's not responding.
It's sorry.
Okay. Here's the site plan, sorry. It's one of those mornings, I guess. On the right is existing Monterey Park. That original park was built in the early 90s as part of Superstition Springs Village, a residential development in the area. And we just recently replaced the playground in the upper northeast corner of the site. You saw it on the first slide. It's a few years back, I think in 2006, we acquired a parcel on the north side and west of the existing parcel. And then on 2013, we acquired the rest of the land you see in the site plan here. So that was all done as part of -- the 2013 land acquisitions were all done as part of the 2012 bond election. And then in 2018, we went out to the public and asked for more funds to expand Monterey to include a Little League softball fields, restroom complex. And the hope at the time was to also be able to build some athletic fields to the south on the vacant parcel you see to the south. We were unable to acquire the parcel to the south, so we've taken those land funds and reinvested them in the parcels we do own. So there are a bit of changes. Just walking around the site really quickly, you see a circular drive around it, around the park, around the fields that's been added to the project. We now have three accesses to the park. One here, two off of Power, and one off of Monterey. Kind of helped get people in and out, and it will help with the circulation of the park. We've added some other features that Mark's gonna talk about, the pickleball courts. And if you're asking yourself why the library services director is here to talk about a park, it's because we've got -- a few years ago, the roof came off the metal, literally, the Mesa Express Library. We spent a lot of time trying to find additional space to lease. Could not find lease rates that were conducive to what we wanted to do. So this project was in the concept stage, and we had a conversation with Mark and Carrie and Chris and Heather and decided this would be a perfect spot to permanently locate the replacement for the Mesa Express Library. So Jesse's gonna talk about this area, the Mesa Express Library. We also have added some pickleball courts and 323 parking spaces. So Mark's up.
Mayor, Council, it's probably appropriate that I'm up here talking to you all about this, because I feel like I've done it for over a decade now, of how to move this park forward and get there. So we're excited to do this. Again, as Beth highlighted, the first phase of this project was the new playground, another signature playground that opened last December. That was on the first slide. If you haven't been out there, we encourage people to go visit that. Again, keeping up with our tradition of when we add parks and playgrounds, we try to make them unique and unique play elements and try to add a different flair to each park that we do. So Monterey definitely has that as well. Beth ran you through a lot of the highlights. Again, these Little League softball fields, there's a -- we think this -- the Little League boundaries have a tendency to shift every couple of years, but we believe this will serve two different Little Leagues at the current time where their boundaries are and give them an opportunity for playing fields as well as the softball. All four of the fields will be skinned to allow us greater flexibility of the infield will be skinned to allow greater flexibility with portable mounds out there that'll move in and out for those groups that need those. And then we're excited to add pickleball courts. We're trying to -- that's the number one, we're next to shade over playgrounds. Pickleball courts is the number one request that PRCF continues to receive on a regular basis. So we're excited to add those and that amenity out there. And then that circle drive was a key factor, and we wanted to ensure the neighborhood that there's, as we put these types of amenities into neighborhoods, are close to, we want to ensure there's enough parking and access that we're not impacting the neighborhood. So we believe we've done that with the circle drive and the three different access points. And then we've added a tot lot that'll be close to the library that Jesse can go over. And then, again, excited to bring this forward and move forward finally. And I think this is a great partnership with libraries and the parks, and we think this is hopefully, if this is successful, a model for future locations where we can spread those services out and meet the community in their neighborhoods. Jesse?
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. Excited to be up here this morning and get to present to you on this project for the library here in Monterey Park. So as you can see, it's sort of conceived of as sort of a micro-library, 1,000 square feet. It's not a huge footprint, but it does bring service right there into the community and already engaged and activated space. And part of that is sort of situating it next to the tot lot here, which is sort of a play structure with some sort of shade structures on top, so that not only can kids play right there, but they also have access to the library as well. And if you look in the upper right corner, there's another area that's sort of an amphitheater of sorts that will allow the library to do programming out there, and that also has shade structures also that can sort of, you know, allow us to program more of the year, you know, as it gets hotter into the summer months. And you'll also see there's an adjacent restroom as well. You can see it here on the top image, or yeah, here, it's sort of angled to the lower right of the actual library building. That's actually an external access restroom, so that's not something you'd access from within the building. It's something you'd access from the outside of the building. So it shares a wall, but it's really an external access restroom. Next slide, please. Okay, so here's a floor plan at the top, and then at the bottom, we have sort of a rendering to get a kind of visual understanding of what the building looks like in the site. A few bullet points while you're looking at this to talk about, because this model is slightly different than what we do at a traditional library. So part of that is trying to minimize staffing in a location like this. So we really strive to innovate and reimagine how the library can grow and evolve to serve the community as needs change. And part of this minimal staffing model is not really to replace traditional library services, but augment those services by being able to bring the library out into the park in this sort of manner. So we're gonna be working with PRCF and the school in the area to try to identify high traffic days and times where we do need staff on-site. And then when we don't have staff on-site, we have a self-service access model. So this uses a technology called OpenPlus. It's a system of technologies, really, that grants patrons access, self-service access to the library building even during unstaffed hours. And the technology can control and monitor the building access and entry, cameras, lighting, alarms, and public announcements as well. So what we're doing now is trying to explore the best balance of access, demand, and security when we're trying to balance how many hours are gonna be staffed and how many are gonna be unstaffed in this location. So that's sort of the conception around that. A couple more things you can see here in this image. High visibility and natural light was really designed into this space as well, not only to get great views out to the park, but also to provide safety and security for folks inside the building. We're also looking at some other technology center designs as well for this location. Some ideas that we've explored, not set in stone, are hold lockers, augmented reality experiences, interactive light walls, remote assistance. So we're really trying to push the boundaries on how we can provide service using technology. And real quick on the floor plan here, you can see it's not a large footprint. About 700 square feet or so is gonna be dedicated to what we call library materials and technology. That's gonna be your popular books, your seed library, your stuff brewery, the stuff you'd find in our physical libraries. And then also, different technologies will be piloting and trying out in this location. And then we also have a sort of reading lounge area to the upper right of the floor plan that you can see there. And there's also a staff area over there to the left, on the bottom left of the floor plan there. So we're really, really excited about this project and how the library can keep innovating and bring new services, library services, to Mesa residents to respond to need and demand as our society changes and grows and technology changes and grows. So, all right, thank you.
Mayor, Council, I just wanted to point out that exterior restroom, that access was designed so whether you're at the playground at the park, the existing park, or you're playing pickleball, those will be available. There is a restroom facility within the quad, but the quad's locked when it's not locked, when it's not in use. So still provided the restrooms on-site for patrons.
So Mayor and Council, first of all, as a grandpa of grandkids play at that park, the bathrooms will be very well accepted, because sprinting all the way back home for a bathroom break is pretty difficult. I've been working on this project for almost 15 years. We first worked with New Leaf, who ran the Helemann House out of this location. They used to run their dirt bikes up and over around in this area, and they were struggling with, you know, what to do. And they were actually working with Development to build this out into some garden homes and whatever, and the community wasn't really excited about that at the time. And so really working with Mike Hughes and the city and working with some things they wanted on CDBG side, and we wanted the land, we were able to work out the first deal to acquire this property almost 15 years ago. And so we've always had a vision about eventually building out a park, and then we've had some, we had subsequent park bond programs that we were able to provide some of the funding. I remember one time, we had the funding that wasn't quite enough, and Councilman Thompson generously helped kind of allow -- we had a discussion about allocating some of the funds that had been in this park to go out east. Pioneer Park, so that park could move forward. And so it's been kind of, it's been really 15 years in the making, so... And as along that path, we, as we started talking to the community, when we got in that engagement, this really has changed to a certain degree to accommodate the residents. And Councilman Thompson will remember the conversations we had with the community about access and not directing a lot of traffic back into the neighborhood. And so we're, we have the two access points going back on Power Road, and we hope, and we think that will really help alleviate the concerns of the community. And the community wanted pickleball. You know, they said, "It's great, you're taking care of the youth," but, you know, it was the parents saying, "Well, what about us?" You know, and so... And I fully endorse that idea of pickleball courts. So it's probably not enough, but we'll keep working on that. And then I'll give Beth credit for this idea. We were looking for that alternative to Mel, the Express Library, that, as we mentioned, had been impacted by a leaky roof. And we had that emergency day where everybody was running down there trying to salvage our books, and we had people donating books, but we just had no place to go. There just, we just couldn't find a location in that area that was big enough that the rents would work. And so Beth, you know, I think suggested this would be, this location is big enough that we could put that mini library in. And Jesse's talked about it really well. We're looking at trying to figure out kind of an automated library so it could have more hours, but we don't put a lot of -- you know, we'll have times it'll be staffed, and we'll have programs, but we also wanted it to be available so people can just walk in and with cameras and your library card, you can get into the libraries. And we'll have the system of libraries too, that you can request books throughout our whole system. You don't necessarily have to go all the way to main to get that book. You can request it, and then we can have it available at any one of our libraries. So we're excited about this new concept and kind of making this fit in this area that today is just kind of leftover parcel in Mesa was ultimately originally gonna be 20 years ago, gonna be an old, was gonna be a Safeway store and complex here. So anyway, we're excited to bring this to you today. I think we've worked out all the pieces and looking forward to moving this project along.
Great.
Yes, Mr. Freeman. So thank you for pushing this forward. I like the concept, just broadening what we offer in our park system. So this is really nice. On the library component, you know, when I go to places, you can check out goods that you buy in lockers, you know, you just show your card and you check it out and you leave. And so that might be something, are you considering doing that type of locker-type concept? I'm just asking the question. What you do is...
Yeah, yeah. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council, yeah, that's a great question. So one of the technologies we have looked at is sort of the vending model like that, as well as a whole locker, where you would request the item, it would go into the locker, then you'd go and retrieve that item that's just for you.
Correct.
So we're looking at some different models as well for like park equipment, since it's situated right in the park, so that we could circulate park equipment and then people could return it to the library as well.
I think that's pretty seamless if we do that. The other thing, I got to play pickleball a couple of weeks ago. I haven't ever played it, you know, but it was awesome. So that's a great concept, I guess, for older people. What we didn't see was where your house was, Mr. Brady, on the map. But that's okay. We like that. We want it to be within walkie distance.
Yes.
Or your golf cart.
My golf cart.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Chris, for working with New Leaf, because I was on the board of directors when Helemann was there.
Oh, okay.
And it was a, it was a real mess. I mean, it was a great place for kids. They, you know, it was a great rehab for them, but I remember when Mike Hughes broached the board about selling the land. And it's going to good use, so congratulations to Councilmember Thompson and residents in District Six. It's gonna be a great amenity for you guys.
Comment, so what is, I imagine we're gonna keep all metrics on the library as far as utilization and all these pieces, so... Because this is a neat concept on, you know, large enough parks, you know, meeting people where they're at as far as they already go to these parks, heavily utilized parks, and seeing if a future is there for these large parks to have something like that that are spread across from the library system that we already have, but in pockets, right? So making sure that we keep metrics and see how this is utilized there, and if it's successful, you know, thinking outside the box on these larger parks that we have in our system to maybe think about how do we add this component to there and even make it more attractive, right?
Sure.
In the future.
Yep.
I guess I'll close it. Yeah, this is, it's amazing what you guys have come to us with and seeing this piece of property transition, you know. I mean, we've lived there, we've lived in the neighborhood now for, gosh, 22 years, 20 years. So we've seen, you know, the go from the housing to the vacant lot, to the proposed apartments, to the vacant lot, and then now to see, you know, the park actually come to fruition. You know, I remember those discussions that we were having of trying to shift money around because the, you know, the budget wasn't there to be able to maintain a new park, and so we were trying to figure out where to put the funding. And I was like, "Man, this thing is all but gone, and it's never coming back, and now it's back." And so it's amazing seeing the pictures of this and what it's gonna look like. And I'm just sad I won't get to cut the ribbon on it. I'll be done on council by the time it opens, but I'm sure that our family will be hanging out over there and enjoying it. So thank you, guys.
So just a couple of wrap-up things, so you know where we're headed on a go-forward. What's on the agenda is the first GMP for the construction contract. We will have another one later this year. We look to start construction in June and finish up about a year from now. So it's on its way.
Great. Well, very innovative model. I think, to me, this seems a little bit like an experiment, because if this is successful, there's a lot of parks that could, you know, follow this example. Tell me, I'm a little nervous about the, the library is kind of buried in the middle of the park, and so I'm just afraid, are there gonna be times where we've got, you know, one librarian sitting there with nothing to do? Or how is the neighborhood gonna know, "Oh wait, it's Tuesday at 2:00, that means I can go to the library"? But if it's, you know, what are the, you know, how do we...
So Mayor, the way, with the automated system we talked about, theoretically, it could be 24/7. There wouldn't have to be a staff person there. Now, there will be a staff, we'll work that in for programming and timing. You know, the Express Library was buried inside of a mall. I mean, we barely had signage, and it was very popular.
Good.
So there's, and I think actually this part, well, when you look at the site plan, the park that already exists, well, you only get a little sliver of that existing park over there to the, or to the east of it. It's well-used. And so, and that library kind of sits up on the top of a berm from that property, so it's actually, inside the park, it's very visible. And again, we think just because of the demand we had for the Express Library where it was buried inside a mall, whatever, I don't, I'm not too concerned about the...
I'm not trying to be pessimistic.
No. I think it'll get used.
Yeah.
And I think, and we're doing a small footprint too, so it's a great experiment to see how it gets used. I think the thing I'm worried about is we may have a line outside the door, because we will have to have capacity issues about how many people can actually go in, but because it's, that's pretty small, right? What did you say, Jesse, the square footage?
Yeah, about 1,000 square feet for the library itself. That includes the staff area, which of course the public won't be going into. So it's about maybe 840 square feet of public area.
So it's a pretty small...
I know that the elementary school is crawling with kids, and that new playground is, you know, yeah, there's big crowds of kids right next door, so I guess I'm, I'm not overly concerned about it. But, Mark, tell me about the Little League field. Sometimes I drive by fields that are dedicated to Little League, and it seems like they're not utilized. You know, Little League has a season, and other ball fields are kind of year-round. I mean, is there a potential for club leasing to these fields, other than during the limited Little League seasons?
Mayor, yes. When I say Little League, I was just, it's more the field size themselves and the distance of the, of home plate to the fence. But yes, these can be used outside of that during, you know, February, January, that April timeframe, when the Little League season is in session, we try to give them priority usage of those fields. But outside of that, yes, absolutely, club field, club usage up to 12U on this size roughly can play out on these fields.
Great. Well, yeah, I think there's some unanswered questions here, but they're all great questions, and depending, and we can pivot depending on what the answers end up being to make this model something that perhaps we can take other places. So congratulations to everyone on the hard work that went into this.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
And Mayor, I know you want to go through the rest of the agenda, but just so you know, we do, we are prepared to give a presentation on 6D, which is the introduction of a zoning case, so...
Go ahead, Mr. Luna.
Chris, did you change the suggestions from Councilmember Thompson, that 5A, B, C, and D?
We will change, we will change that to District 5, yes.
Okay, great.
We need to update our district maps at least.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Council, before we hear about the zoning case, any other questions on Monday's agenda? Vice Mayor?
Mayor, I have a question on item 4D and the monitoring contract for the courts, the GPS tracking. Is this a new system, or have we had this before, and this is just a new contract?
Yeah, we've had, we've had it before.
Oh, okay. All right. That's my only question.
Yes, this is just an ongoing...
It's an existing system that we're just...
Okay, thank you.
Okay, if there's nothing else, let's go ahead and get updated on the zoning case.
Yeah.
Just want to give you a little bit of an update of what's been going on with this project. So this project went to planning zoning board and received recommendation for approval. But after the planning zoning board, there were several number of residents that really came out to oppose the project, and they informed both the planning staff and the council member for the district that they did not receive adequate information during the planning zoning here. So to go through the presentation, this is what you're looking at. This is the site. It's right across the street from Harmony Park. It's on the south side of Southern Avenue and then the west side of 36... of 32nd Street. The request is to rezonate from its current zoning designation of single residence nine to multiple residence three, to allow 36 units of multifamily. So these are a couple of pictures that we took when we went to the site. Again, these are pictures looking across the property. You can see this well-established residential neighborhood. And this is a big한 site. To the west is an office building, and right to the south is a church. So the general plan designation on the property is neighborhood. And we keep having this conversation as to what is the goals and basically the intent of the neighborhood character designation. If you look at the general plan, the neighborhood character designation is supposed to provide the opportunity for development of diverse or variety of housing types. And the general plan encourages high, high density at the corners or arterial frontages and intersections because it serves as a buffer to the single residence. This property that you're looking at is really at the corner of Southern and 32nd Street, which fits into the goals of the neighborhood character designation and where this type of uses are encouraged to be developed or located. So this was a site plan that was presented to the planning zoning board. And if you look at the site plan, there were a couple of items that were shown. So the planning zoning reviewed for 40 multifamily units. And in addition to that, there was also a proposed dog park that was part of the, the initial site plan. And there was also a pool area and a playground with shading to provide some kind of amenity for the residents. And also, there was 84 parking stalls that were provided. And most of the units, actually all the units do have two parking spaces as part of the development. So after the planning zoning meeting, when we realized or were notified by several of the residents that they were not aware of the development that had been proposed, I want to point out that as part of the planning zoning notification requirement, they were required to also post a sign and send letters to property owners within the surrounding development. So when we're notified, we basically advised and recommended to the developer to go back to the community and engage with the community and discuss the project and any changes that the community will have. I'll go through my next slide to discuss all the meetings that we've had. But we've had at minimum five direct meetings with the neighborhood. And as a result of the discussions, one of the, or a couple of issues that came up was, the neighborhood wanted reduction in the number of units, and also wanted to make sure that the, all the deviations that the applicant was asking for is actually minimized to meet the setbacks that are similar to the surrounding development. And one major issue was the number of parking spaces that had been proposed. There were additional parking spaces that were proposed, and the neighborhood believed that, that those parking spaces were not adequate to support the development. So through that lengthy conversations and various meetings, the developer reduced the number of density from 40 to 36 units. And as a result of that, was able to increase the number of parking spaces. This is additional parking spaces based beyond the two that are part of each unit, to basically increase the whole number of parking spaces. And also reduce the amount of deviation or the number of deviations that were being asked to basically be consistent to the zoning district, and also to mimic the setbacks that are really at the neighborhood as well. And as part of that, the pool area, through staff conversation and also with the developer, removed the pool, I mean, the dog park to allow more parking. Because right across the street, there is a park which people can walk across the street and basically exercise their dogs and all that. So.
I think there's actually a specific dog park area.
It is a dog park, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So overall, if you look at the number of parking spaces, based on the number of units, 82 parking spaces are required. And right now, the applicant is providing 108 parking spaces. My recollection, I think, overall, they are providing 25 additional parking spaces. Those are parking spaces beyond the two that are going to be in the garage or part of each unit. And also, this project went to the design review board in January, and there were few recommend, the design review board overall did like this kind of design, it's kind of modern. And it does also meet the basic requirement of our quality development standards. The few concerns that the design review board expressed was, if you look at the units facing Southern, there were 12 units, and they want to make sure that it doesn't become kind of repetitive designs whenever you have that length. So they wanted to see some, a little bit of breaks as well. And also, they wanted to make sure that the materials that are being proposed will be those materials that will be used for actual construction, so it maintains our quality of design. So that was kind of the recommendation that the design review board recommended to staff us, you know, the final approval for design is actually administrative approval.
So Nana, what happens to, how does, how does the design review recommendation, I mean, to?
Go to the next slide now, because I think this is.
Have those, have the suggestions been incorporated into the plan that's now in front of us?
Yes.
Well, go to, yeah, that's the one that I think, you saw the pictures of the neighborhood.
This is kind of stark and modern, and the neighborhood said, no, thank you.
Yeah. And as I get to it, yes, the neighborhood absolutely have expressed concerns. They believe that this type of design doesn't fit into the neighborhood. So one of the things that, you know, we've been talking to the developer to find typically when there are those concerns, some of the things that they do is, you look at common themes in the neighborhood, you look at ways to bring certain elements into the design to really make sure that it's compatible and it's not out of place. There are several opportunities to be able to do that. And so we have the final approval. So those are the things that, as I'm speaking right now, that is really the outstanding issue with the community in terms of the density, the reduction in setback and all that, based on the various meetings so far. The last time we met with the community, which I will show here, there were, this is one of the, I mean, largest crowd I've seen after the pandemic on a zoning case. And so majority of them, they had also selected a few leaders to represent the community. And so, based on the reduction in the number of units, that increasing the additional parking spaces to 25 units, providing a good neighbor policy, which was really one critical part, because they expressed concerns about the visitors and additional parking overflowing into either the church or the community. So they wanted to make sure that there is adequate parking for visitors. And also, there is some form of good neighbor policy, which will be written in a way into the CCNRs that, you know, residents are not allowed to park on the street. And also, if you have certain large vehicles, because some of the concerns that the neighbors expressed was, this size of garages will not be able to park your large two, you know, F250. So what they're going to write into the CCNRs is, you know, if you have those type of vehicles, you won't be able to rent out. Because typically in this apartment, you have to show when you're filling the form, the type of vehicle that you have. So that was a concern that the neighbors expressed, and the developer actually informed them that typically, the people that will be living in this unit will not have two big cars. And so they are finding a way to basically address that, and also find different ways of informing the renters, the parking restrictions, and encouraging them to continue to park. But looking at 25 additional parking spaces that have been provided in addition to two garages in each unit, we believe from South perspective, that has really adequate number of parking to support that type of development, even if not more.
Nana, I have a question. So this good neighbor policy that you talk about, did you mention an F250?
No. That was just an example. I wasn't picking on anyone.
We'd want those people.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just wondering about, hey, I'm, I'm moving here from Oklahoma here to Arizona. I found the perfect place, you know, my, I'm, I'm driving my F250, 350. And I pull in here, and I can't, housing is such a premium here, and you're telling me I cannot park that truck in this development?
We, we are not prohibiting that the developer, as part of their CCNRs, is trying to, we incorporate ways that, because if those trucks, that was one of the major concerns from the neighbors, that if you have people who cannot park their trucks within their garages, they are going to be parking on the streets. And so a way to address that is really accommodate people or encouraging people to really park in the development. Because the internal streets in the development are not large enough to be able to allow people to also park on the street within the development. So with that, and then also with additional 25 parking spaces, which we believe will be able to accommodate a lot of overflow parking to accommodate.
So how big are the garages? Remind me. Didn't we set some standards in there?
We do, we should remember the specifics, yeah.
I want to see if my truck will fit.
Mayor, Councilman Freeman, so the, the proposed dimensions for this is 20 feet and 8 inches by 20 feet long. Our standard is 20 by 22. So it's a.
Your park will be bigger than your living space.
I know. Maybe I'll just live in my truck.
Get more room.
So, so I guess enforcement, I mean, the good neighbor policy, if we consent to that, and people complain about, hey, this person is parking a big vehicle in there, does that go to code compliance? Or are we going to monitor that? I, I don't.
They're parking on a public right of way. I don't know that you can do anything.
It's a private.
Mayor, Council, I know Jim is going to add to it. So there, there is a condition of approval as part of the rezoning case to comply with a good neighbor policy. And then in the good neighbor policy, they've listed how they're going to address when people are, residents are in violation. So we will contact them to say, this is what you've given, is going to be your procedure. How, demonstrate that you followed the procedure. But enforcement of their CCNRs is a private agreement, and they are going to be responsible to make sure that what they've told us, they follow that.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, we, we normally don't enforce good neighbor policies. The very nature of them is for them to facilitate relationships between adjacent properties and then give them a means for incorporating some of that into CCNRs or other documents between those. But we, we facilitate those resolutions, but we don't usually get into the enforcement of the neighbor policies.
Good. Thank you. That's all I have for now.
Well, so I mean, just to finish that conversation, a couple of years from now, someone moves into this apartment complex, they have a vehicle that doesn't fit in their garage, it violates the good neighbor policy and the CCNRs. I guess it's up to the HOA to decide if they're going to have an enforcement action or not.
But you have those 25, how many parking spaces?
25 additional.
You have 25 additional outside of the parking garage that they could park on, too.
Okay.
So, Mayor, Council, with the design, this is what you're looking at. And then these are a few renderings showing, you know, the common amenities as part of the development, which is centrally located in a way to create the community gathering space. Also, as part of the rezoning requirement was for the developer to really notice, or we have the citizen participation plan, which is part of the rezoning request, is to notify property owners and then HOAs within a certain distance. The citizen participation report or plan that is required doesn't have a specific distance requirement. And it's good to really distinguish that from the absolute legal requirement for notification. The absolute legal requirement within the code and also by system to this 500 feet, we typically encourage such development to go outside of 500 feet so they can capture more. When we received the citizen participation report, the information that was in the report was, property owners within 1,000 feet were notified. And then also, there's been informal ways of notifying the HOAs and registered neighborhood. Through the review and the discussion after the P&amp;Z, it came to our attention that actually there was, the people that were notified were those within 500 feet and not 1,000 feet. So that still did not basically ignore the legal notification requirement, because that's really 500 doorway encouraging situations. But that was also one of the reasons why we decided to really have extensive neighborhood participation and involvement, so we can engage and reach out to more people that are supposed to be, are, who be, are supposed to be part of the process. So through that, we had five neighborhood meetings, as I showed you earlier on. There's been a lot of community involvement. I, every, the leaders have been sending text messages, they've been reaching out to anybody that is interested around the neighborhood and the community as well. So there's been extensive, really, public participation. So that's where we start in terms of the outstanding issue that I repeat again. My, from the last meeting, the outstanding issue right now is the elevations. The neighborhoods still have concerns with the elevations.
So, Nana, are you done, complete?
Yes, I'm done.
I think, I think it'd be, I think the council needs to know, too, about the protest petition.
Yes. Mayor, Council, one of the, well, residents within a certain feet radius within the development also do have the opportunity, if they oppose the project, which they have an opportunity to basically oppose the project. And when you have that percentage, which they've been able to read the percentage, it will require supermajority vote of the council. Fortunately, unfortunately, they do qualify, they've submitted, the petition has been reviewed. And so if they don't withdraw that petition, then this, this vote, I mean, decision will require supermajority vote of the city council.
Yeah.
And the petition?
Oh, five, I'm sorry.
The petition is for just not doing the project at all?
Yes.
Opposing this?
Opposing this or any other like zoned project?
Opposing their requests before.
This is just this.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, let's go back to the notice situation for a little bit, because it sounds like our rules mandated notice to residents within 1,000 feet of this project. What we found out is that they were only mailed to 500 feet?
Mail, Mayor, Council, no. Our mandatory requirement is 500 feet. And they, we do recommend in situations to go outside of 500 feet, because in this situation, you have a church and then you have an office. So when you capture that. And so, it's a recommendation, but it's not a mandatory requirement. But one of the notification is one way, and also, you know, posting the signs, add our informal communication. Their intent is really to really get all the town and communities really involved and aware. And through this extensive involvement, basically, that intent has been made where there's been a lot of, you know, people participating and engaging. And I think everybody has been aware and been able to provide an input.
Yeah, I mean, I'm looking at the same picture as you are. The obvious, the community engagement on this is not a problem at this point. But I guess, were, are requirements met in this case for notification? Or was there an error?
Yes. So, Mayor, so yes, the legal requirements for the 500 feet were met. Where the discrepancy is, is that staff had encouraged them to notice within 1,000 feet radius. And that's what they said in their citizen participation report that they did. So it, we found out later that they did not notify within that radius. And so we asked them to go back out and reengage those folks and notice within 1,000 feet.
So it's been that, it was on the initial notice?
That's correct.
Well, I think staff's recommendation was correct in this case, because obviously 500 feet was inadequate because it was adjacent to, you know, given the configuration.
Right.
But I guess, how do we normally verify, or we don't, it's just that the applicant has to come in and, and, and represent that they accomplished that. And then it's, it's up to us to figure out later whether they did or didn't, based on. later whether they did or didn't, based on the reaction of the neighborhood?
Mayor, Council, because of the magnitude, we did require them to certify the information that they've given to us. So, when they give us the citizen participation report, and the number of, we typically get a certification from them that they did send it to people within this radius, and they give us a whole long list of all the addresses and people that they notified.
Okay. Well, I hope there's a learning opportunity here somewhere, for, could you, staff was right, this needed to be, go beyond 500 feet, and we need to figure out how, in future cases, do we verify that staff's recommendations were either, let us know if you're ignoring our recommendations, so we can then assess whether we need to do something more, or?
Yeah, well, unfortunately, I think they represented in the report they had done that.
Right.
And then we went back and valid, or, verified, use the right word, right? Is that, how did, what was the sequence, Rachel?
Yeah, that's correct. So, Mayor, they did provide us the list of addresses within 1,000 feet, so essentially, in their report, they said that they had noticed those residents. But it was when we had citizens come back and kind of raise concern that they didn't get those, they, we asked them to take a look into it, and they admitted they did have an error, and that they didn't mail those out. So, this was kind of a one-off situation a little bit, because we do rely on applicants to certify that they're meeting those requirements.
Well, I think we all lost the trust of the neighborhood, we kind of, at the beginning, right, because they were...
And that's why we, the process was, I don't say slowed down, but deliberate, deliberated to allow for that notice, then go out again, and let them participate in the future meetings, is that correct? So, at the end of the day, there was, there was an opportunity for those who were not notified in the first round to participate in subsequent meetings.
Well, I think to that point, we had numerous emails to our inboxes for this particular project about residents not being notified. I mean, I got numerous emails, I think all of us did. So, in our due diligence, we need to make sure the applicant, again, reaches out to them.
Yeah, we don't, yeah, yes.
Well, so, I think Monday and at the following meeting, we're going to have, I think, large crowds, or we're going to at least have several people that'll come up and accuse us all of playing fast and loose with the notice requirements, because they should have been notified, and they weren't. So, we're going to need to be able to explain how we learned from this, and how we're going to avoid that in the future.
Right, and that was just only the first round, though, Mayor. I mean, at the end of the day, they were.
Right, I get that, and...
And had the opportunity to participate in meetings, so.
But that is going to be an issue we need to address upfront, is what went wrong, and how we're going to, how we've learned from this. And I'm not saying staff did anything wrong, and the applicant, probably, I'm sure it was an innocent mistake, but nonetheless, that's a, that's a bad way to start your zoning case.
Mayor, Council, that's correct. And we've been having this conversation with the neighbors, so we've told them what happened. So, majority of them, at the end of the day, have seen the main issue needed to be addressed, and at least from the issues that have been addressed, they seem to be okay with it.
Okay. As long as I'm talking, my last question is, again, the, so the elevation seems to be the ongoing dispute, and how is that going to be resolved? Is that...
I think it's a great question, Mayor, because I think there is great concern that we had this conversation, you know, modern development, it looks good in the right context, right? And then you saw those pictures that, go back to the beginning, where you're showing those pictures of the neighborhood, you can imagine putting those designs, which I think would look great in certain art parts of our community, but when you're looking across to neighborhoods like this, yeah, I think that's, you know, we want to lift the neighborhood up, we want something quality. I know, I remember, No, I asked, so, when we did the Longbow development, they asked, the neighborhood asked about that design to look, and make it look more like the commercial, or, at least there was some context between the commercial design, and we waited for them to go back and redesign that.
That's correct.
Are we asking for a redesign of the...
I've had conversations with the developer, and that's what I'm asking, that they need to find a way to address the neighborhood concerns.
I would suggest that Mayor and Council is that we can do the introduction on Monday, but I think you would need to hold that out, as we're still waiting to see what that looks like. And that does, that may suggest that if we don't have something that, I hate to put counsel into the position of being design review, but at the same time, I think there's broad agreement that what's being presented right now doesn't quite fit, and it is, doesn't work with the neighborhood. So, we may want to wait, at least not for the introduction, but certainly the second meeting, make sure we have something that we can look at differently. Does that make sense? And Dave, you were involved in the other one?
Yeah, I was involved in the Longbow, and it's really important that you get buy-in from the community, if they're not satisfied with what's going to be put there. And I, anecdotally, I've heard, well, this is our, you know, as an architect, you create a product, and that's your art piece, if you will. But at the same time, these residents need to live with what's there. And so, we had to make adjustments with the Longbow, and, because you have to satisfy both parties and come to some kind of consensus. So, I think that's probably the course that we need to take, is perhaps where you're at.
Also, I guess I'm still a little unclear, design review is not our responsibility, but making sure the residents are heard and the design review process is followed is our responsibility. So, we can introduce it on Monday, and we can withhold our approval until we feel like the design review issue has been resolved.
Mayor, Council, that's correct.
Absolutely. And you could even say, you could say that on Monday, too.
Yeah.
That nobody's like endorsing, I think you have to be careful, because sometimes the community, I think, when they see, do introductions, and you take a vote, they sometimes believe you're endorsing the application as is, and I think it may be good to clarify that even you are waiting, if that's how you feel, for the next generation or whatever proposal we're going to see before approval's taken. Because that is a concern for staff. We're still waiting for that, because right now, we're concerned about what's in front of us.
Assuming there's, it sounds like there could be some delays, but if there is no delay, it's introduced on Monday, when is the time for the vote? What is the date?
Mayor, Council, May 16th.
Okay.
Can that be extended? Can that be extended? Continued?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
As a matter of fact, Mayor and Council, I mean, Jewish is bringing this up, May 16th, you have flexibility. We don't even have to set May 16th, we feel like that's already, because by the time you get a new design, and then you go back out and have another neighborhood meeting, you know, I mean, we could set it for the, for now, we could even set it for a meeting in June. You know, I'm just trying to give you flexibility, you have the flexibility. Questions, do you want to put that, today it's set to do that for the 16th, so two weeks later, you know?
No, no, would it be possible to see the text on that petition, as far as what they're protesting specifically, so that we know what criteria is on that petition?
Mayor, Council...
Or is it just in general?
It's just general position to the zoning request, it's not specific items. We get the specific through our conversations with them.
Okay. Who's the zoning attorney for this?
There isn't one.
Mayor, Council, there isn't one.
That's a problem, yeah, that's part of the problem, okay.
Mr. Thompson?
I just have a question, is the designer still on the P&amp;Z board?
Mayor, Councilmember, or Thompson, yes, he is.
Because I noticed in the presentation that it passed 6-0, so...
Yes, he abstained from that vote.
Just making sure, thank you.
But he presented, did he present?
No.
Someone else presented?
No, he had another staff member present.
Mayor, if I could, on McKellips, there's a similar design of this building that is called the Allen, if you want to see some of this contemporary design, which is kind of a little separate. This one, this one here, you have a suburban ranch feel with a contemporary apartment complex in there. So, that's probably the disconnect between the residence and the design of the building. So, I look forward to carrying this conversation on further. But, yeah, I have a little trouble with design right now. Thanks.
I need to, now, Councilmember, this is Councilmember Spilsbury's district, she has been very, very involved in this. She's, all these meetings that you're seeing, she's probably in those pictures. So, she's had a lot of engagement in this. She will be out of town on Monday, as will I. So, just so the neighborhood knows, this is going to be introduced on Monday, but that, you know, as we've described, there's still a lot of unresolved issues, and it won't be voted on. We'll go ahead and set it, I guess, for the 16th, just to keep the pressure on people to make, to meet. But personally, I doubt that we're going to actually vote on it on the 16th, we'll probably continue it again. But let's leave it on the 16th, just so the pressure is on everyone to move, and we'll possibly reset it for another date if the issues haven't been resolved. Does that sound right to everyone? So, for the neighborhood, don't be distressed when you show up on Monday and your mayor and your council member aren't there, it's just being introduced, and we'll be there when the voting is required. All right? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Council, any other questions on Monday night's agenda?
I think I had a question on 6D, I believe.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That would be the meeting confer one? Is it, I don't...
Yes, skip back, you're fine.
Okay. Mr. Smith, you want to go through that? Oh, John's here.
Let's see if John knows how to use the computer, though. So far, so good. Mayor, Council, my name is John Pombi, I'm an assistant city manager, and it is my pleasure to come talk to you about this item. For the last 12 years, I've overseen the labor negotiations process for the city, and I will tell you, that entire time, there has been conversations about how we run the process, how it affects the charter, all of this has been discussed over and over again. What I'm bringing you here today is something spearheaded by your city manager, Chris Brady, your city attorney, Jim Smith, to reach out to both labor organizations and bring to you a consensus for a charter change that will allow us to do meet and confer in a way that makes all parties happy with the process. It's very rare that I come up with you consensus in this area, but we have consensus on this, and I'll run through it, and then answer any questions you have on the process that we're going to lay out for you. But I would say, over the last eight weeks, between Jim and Chris, they've met with labor at least three times, maybe more, to go through and make sure everybody was on the same page and comfortable with this process. As you can see, what we're suggesting is a limited exception for sworn public safety employee organizations. It's very important that I lay that out for you, this is not even the entirety of sworn. In fire, it is captains, engineers, and firefighters, and in police, it is sergeant and police officers. Those are the groups that are covered under this. Both labor organizations, all three labor organizations can have more members, but our negotiation process is limited to the sworn members that we have articulated here today. The meet and confer process is with city management, and then council can enter into the memorandum of understanding that we would present to you at the end of that process. Here are a list of the topics that we can negotiate on, wages, hours, and non-health-related benefits. Our really, our goal is not to create conflicts with existing rules and laws, and, you know, as we go through this process, we work with it, and then we come to you at the end and say, okay, here's what we have agreed upon, or here's some of the concerns we have. We get direction from you, and we go back to the table and iron it out. That is really a very brief description of this process, because, as I started out with, this is something we've worked directly with both labor organizations on, and they are in support of this moving forward on how to address meet and confer.
Mr. Pombi, once you talk about the process, once council approves it, what happens next? Let the community know what happens next.
Trying to remember, it's been so long.
Maybe Mr. Smith can...
So, Mayor and Council, and let me talk about also, just sort of, this, we'll then place this on the ballot for November. And so, this, and we've also talked, I think it was last week at the study session, that we talked about a change on the procurement side for the charter. And so, both of these are on the agenda for Monday night, both will be introduced, their ordinances. Because their ordinances were due, the introduction, then the adoption. We'll also be coming to council for some other items to be placed on that ballot in November. Obviously, home rule will be placed on that ballot, and possibly bond, bond election. And so, those are adopted by resolution, and so, they don't have to go through the introduction process that an ordinance does, so you're not seeing those right now. And so, we're bringing to you this ordinance, along with ordinance we talked about last week. It'll be introduced Monday, adopted if council decides to adopt it two weeks later. And then, we'll bring a call for the election, which will wrap up all the items that'll be on the election. That's on the June 6 council meeting, where you call the election and place everything on the ballot.
So, John, just quickly, to the mayor and Councilor Luna, so, the process of meeting and discussing and coming up with agreements with our representative groups really isn't going to change much from what we've always done, as far as that part of the process, right, as far as the timing when we sit down. Because the reason, we often have these discussions kind of began at the beginning of a calendar year, so that we can work through those items, so that we can bring them to, if there's going to be anything that's going to have an impact in the budget, we can bring those to during the springtime, so that they're included in the upcoming budget. What will be, what we've always tried to do is do a multi-year agreement also, and so, today, we currently have an implementation plan. I have an agreement with the representative groups today, by memo, via memo, that establishes my commitment to them, the recommendations that would be included in the city manager's proposed budget. So, that's already established today. So, nothing, all those discussions that we have beginning in, I don't know, January, or, I know for you, if you're around, but the formal process is probably in the January timeframe, so we can lay out the significant issues, begin to call them out, find out what the financial impact, determine whether the city will agree to it, and have those discussions, and then hopefully come to an agreement. So, kind of consistent with the budget, you will, the council will also be looking at this memorandum of understanding. Now, in theory, we would approve that in one year, and it would have a three-year application, right? So, you would approve it, it would then be kind of a direction to me, obviously, in the city council, as a commitment to include that in the forecast and going forward. Now, the ballot language is also very clear, that if during that three-year period, during the term of that MOU, the council each year, as it's adopting a budget, if it determines that for some reason, and we've, and this has happened, when we hit a significant downturn in the economy, the council say, yeah, I know we have this three-year agreement, but we just can't, right now, without laying off a lot of, you know, employees, we're going to make an adjustment to whatever the financial commitments might have been. So, that has a flexibility. Otherwise, the MOU allows the council to adopt this three-year, let's say, a three-year plan, and then every year, we just come to council and say, we're in the second year, the third year of the plan, and it's included, it's already included in the budget, here's where it shows up in the budget. And then every three years, we go and have another discussion, establish another three-year MOU. But even today, we are in the middle of a, I guess, are we in the second year now, of our first year of the implementation, last implementation plan?
This is going to be the, this fiscal year coming up will be the second year of a five-year plan.
So, we already have a lot of that already. It's a practice that we go today, the differences will be a formal document that then will become for the council to approve on a council agenda.
So, the whole idea is that in November, when people vote for it, this will be a charter change?
Yep.
And then the community will decide to, whether they support this...
Right.
...this measure or not?
Right.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Freeman, no.
So, this is long overdue, just for, just for all the, everything that happens within our labor groups. But the question, Mr. Smith, how, how long ago has this, what other municipalities made changes? I mean, how many years ago? Are we kind of like the last Mohicans on this, on a charter change and implementing this?
Yeah.
Do either of you know?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, we're the only city, to my knowledge, that has this collective bargaining limitation within its charter. The last city that had it was the City of Chandler, and they changed it 18 years ago. And so, we are, we're an anomaly. We're the only city, to my knowledge, that has this provision. And so, by making this exception, making this charter change to allow this in this manner, we're really coming in line with our fellow cities that have allowed this, a number of cities that have done this, so...
Right, but let's be clear, there are cities that do not negotiate, they don't recognize labor. So, this is, in those cities that have the prohibition of collective bargaining, because there are cities in the valley that do not bargain at all.
Right, but they don't have a prohibition within their charter.
That's what I mean.
That's, that's what I, is the charter issue.
I just don't want to suggest that there are, there are several cities that do not negotiate or recognize labor.
And Mayor and Council, Councilmember Freeman, I want to be clear, not many cities had to change their charter. It's not like we're the last city to change their charter. Many of these cities never had that type of prohibition in their charter. So, it's not like we're 18 games, 18 years behind the game. We had a charter that was unique to Mesa, and most cities did not have that issue within their charter.
Okay, thank you.
So, just to restate, I think, what was already been said, this will eliminate the prohibition for collective bargaining in the charter, but then it's still either up to an ordinance or a management policy to spell out what the process is that we're going to follow, what the city manager's going to do. And he does, we don't have to adopt those, we could be like Gilbert or others that say, we don't have a prohibition in our charter, but we still just don't negotiate.
Council can make that prerogative at all times.
Right.
Yeah, and Mayor and I...
This just eliminates that legal hurdle that the people will say, well, before you, we can't talk to you because you're violating our charter if we talk to you.
Right, it creates an exception. It doesn't eliminate it, it creates an exception. And it provides a sufficient framework, too, I would say, that's really sort of a good starting point, so that it's... starting point, so that it's not just, if council wanted to, it could adopt an ordinance, but I don't think it would be necessary, because this has a sufficient framework by itself. But it's, it does allow the additional policies, though, to be.
So where will we look to see what the rules are going forward for those meet and confer? Will it be a management policy? Will it be an ordinance? Will it be something?
I think that's to be determined after, because this is, you know, if you actually pull it up, it's in Legistar right now, so if people are interested, you can pull it up, you can see the language. This isn't, like many other charter provisions, it's only a sentence or two sometimes. It's rather, this actually has a fair amount of detail. And so this sets forth a fair amount of the framework already as to the process, as far as, you know, sort of what can be discussed, and that the concept that it'll be, that the MOU will come to council sort of with the budget and be approved at that time. And so, you know, the concepts are sort of there.
Mayor, in the past, there has been.
Management policy?
No, well, there has been, but there had been suggestions or attempts to put some very specific language in the, creating the process, and the timing, and the appeals process, and the role of the city manager. We're not recommending that. We don't, we think that was overly complicated, very burdensome. It put everything in a very tight box. We have, I think we've demonstrated over the last eight years, without the MOU, that we have a relationship where we can sit down in enough time before the budget to come up with consensus ideas. We don't need what has been presented to us in the past, a very extensive, detailed criteria and timeframes and obligations to meet, and possibilities of mediation and all that. We're not, I mean, at this time, this is not included at some point in the future. If the city decides they want to establish those rules of engagement, that's fine. Frankly, we found that by just having good relationships and sitting down and talking, we've been more productive than having that hanging over our head, so.
Yeah, and that might be an issue for another day, but this is a, this multi-step process, and first you get rid of the prohibition, and then we can move on to the nuts and bolts.
Well, and Mayor, just to be clear, Mayor and Council, it creates an exception to the prohibition for the sworn members that we talked about, who are parts of these groups. And the guidelines that Jim is talking about is very similar to how we've done the process throughout, whether we called it an MOU or an implementation plan. It gives the same basic parameters that we've always followed to get to the result of an MOU or an implementation plan at the end of that process. So I think it is, it is a lot further down than just the initial steps. This sets us up to do what we have done in the past, with the exception to the charter prohibition, that still is there for other groups.
All right.
And the fact that we already, we're in the middle of a five-year agreement anyway, so it's not, we're not going to have to recreate a whole lot of, at least in the first few years, we've got quite a bit in place.
No, I echo Mr. Freeman's comments. This is overdue, it's, it's, we've always had to get over this hurdle and rationalize speaking with these groups in the first place and defend it. And so this will eliminate that issue, and we can cut straight to the substance of conversations with our labor groups, so this is a good thing. And that means we're all going to have to go, if we, we're going to need to go out and explain to the voters why they should do this, why they should amend our city charter. It's not a given that the voters are going to vote for this. So I think it's incumbent on all of us to explain why this is a good idea.
And Mayor, just, I need to make this clear also, for all the other employees, their voices can be heard, too, by the city manager. You don't need an MOU to come and sit down with city management to talk about what are, what's important to city employees. Because sometimes this feels like, for the rest of employees, a privilege they don't have, and somehow they feel like they don't have that opportunity. We certainly encourage that, and we'll create opportunities for them to give that feedback. This is a formal process that's kind of the tradition of public safety, but certainly it doesn't preclude any group or opportunity for any individuals to come in and visit and express their concerns or interest to city management.
Amen. Good to hear. All right, thank you. Counsel, other questions about Monday night's meeting? All right, let's move on with the rest of the agenda. We're about an hour and 15 minutes into this. Mr. Brady, we've got two budget presentations. Why don't we go ahead and take a quick break now? And we'll reconvene at nine o'clock. Well, I don't think we need 15 minutes. Why don't we say 10 minutes? Eight, so it's 8:55. Take a break. Ladies, good to see you. Looking forward to hearing your presentation on the Community Services Department.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, Mayor and Council. Ruth Giesi, Community Services Director. With me, Michelle Albanese, our Housing and Community Development Director, and Mary Brandon, our Deputy Director. I want to just take a moment to thank all our team members of Community Services. Also with me, behind us are Lindsay Belinky, Shannon Gross, Rosario Beltran Josie, and Michelle Durkovic. They're here for expertise as needed. And, you know, all our divisions, I'm just really proud of all of them. Michelle Albanese with the Community Development Team, you know, handling four times the amount of our regular funding seamlessly. Our Housing Authority receiving more vouchers and finding alternative ways to find more rental units for our residents. Mary Brandon and Maribel Flores allocating $45 million in rental and utility assistance since 2020, serving 7,600 households so far. Community Engagement and our Volunteer Office, standing up programs overnight, continuing to engage residents, especially during a time when they were vulnerable and maybe at home. And Animal Control, providing essential services to residents and finding new ways to educate our community about how to take care of their animals. Each area provides vital services to Mesa residents. Our department's purpose and mission are to support, educate, and engage our residents. We also align with the housing path to recovery. And in fact, two of our budget requests directly relate to that strategy as well. What we're going to be doing is, we're going to focus on one measure from each of the divisions. The first is a performance measure for community education for animal control. This is a quarterly measure. They have provided 381 people with education and training, and year-to-date, it's 750. We raised the target, but as you can see, they're still going above the target with their education. And what they do is, they really talk about animal health and safety, hot weather warnings, and the leash and licensing requirements as well. Additional highlights for the division is that they've also placed over 900 animals in a safe environment, and continue to work with our incoming police officers, offering training on the animal cruelty process as well. There will be a little bit more information on animal control in our budget slide, a few slides in as well. The Community Engagement and Volunteer Performance Measure is specifically related to the number of volunteers engaged in meaningful service. We have a different, different set of targets depending on the type of year, time of year, I mean. In the summer and winter, we have 150 volunteers for our target, and then in the fall and the spring, we have 500. And so far, we engaged 154 volunteers this quarter, and then year-to-date is 864 volunteers. And that equates to a value of over $97,000, and that includes both the volunteer hours and then the in-kind donations as well. And some of the events, as you all go to as well every year, our Love Your City event, the MLK Parade, the pit count, and the Neighbors Helping Neighbors programs. Other highlights for this area, we did now go in-person for our neighborhood classes. So far, we've engaged 150 leaders. We teach residents on the Mesa Now app, how to use that, how to access city services, how to take care of their neighborhoods. They also do some action planning and offer HOA leadership classes as well. We're also excited that we're expanding our Hometown Heroes program. We are able to honor more military veterans and active-duty members. We will be going down Main Street this year rather than on Center, because then we can have more banners. So we're really excited about that. So look for that. Starts a couple days before Memorial Day, and we will be honoring 49 members, which is a record.
Ruth, Mr. Thompson has a question.
Including Mr. Thompson.
I was going to bring this up again, I think I brought it up to Chris before, but, you know, with our Hometown Heroes program, and I think that's through the Downtown Mesa Association, is that correct?
Yes, they help us with putting up the banners.
Because, because one of the things, one of my complaints or gripes is that we're charging veterans for flags. So if we want to honor a veteran, the veteran has, or the veteran's family has to purchase a flag. So there's, there's an expense to the veteran to be honored. And to me, it's kind of a slap in the face as a veteran, that, I mean, not that I want to be honored anyway, but if we're doing a program to honor our heroes and our veterans, then it shouldn't, there shouldn't be a cost associated with that. So it either, in my opinion, it needs either to be picked up through the business community or through voluntary funds, or, or something of that nature, versus charging a veteran or their family to honor them with a banner. My thoughts.
Thank you for that, Mayor. Councilmember Thompson, one thing we did do is, we were able to reduce the cost of the banner by going to that smaller banner. And we really, there's a cost to printing the banner and then also putting them up, the labor of it. So we try to minimize that way. We also take donations for the program, so we're always working with lots of different organizations. Our webpage does have a donate button, so that as we gain funds, we don't necessarily charge the family when we receive the application. So we have had tried to augment that as well.
And I talked to the Chamber of Commerce years ago about this, and Sally agreed that if they were allowed, if the Chamber was allowed to take it over, they could go out to the business community, because we have a lot of businesses that really support veterans, Boeing being one of those. And, you know, they would try to find ways to cover the costs for the veterans and their families. And so if the Chamber of Commerce is willing to do that and take that project on, then why not shift it over to them, so that we don't have a cost include, or a cost incurred by veterans for the program?
I, no, I agree. I think if they're willing to raise the money for it, then we will, because I don't think the logistics of getting on our pools and printing that, we can do that. But if the Chamber is in a position to raise the funds for it, I think that's all great, we can help off of it.
But I think the problem is that it's under the guise of the DMA, and so the Chamber can't do anything with it, because it's associated with DMA. That's, that's the conversations that I've had in the past.
I don't know why that would be a problem.
Are there contractual agreements with them?
Well, it's because it's downtown.
Well, it's the DMA, I know, but.
Well, we can figure this out, we can talk to them. I don't understand why that would be a problem. Or they could create a foundation where they could contribute.
Counsel is going to ask a foundation.
We will definitely look into that. Thank you so much.
So Ruth, the question, you said that there's a link that you can make a contribution to the program? I wasn't aware of that.
I'm sorry. Lindsay's did say, we run the program, but the DMA hangs the banners. But there is a cost to printing the banners, so, but we can look at that. Yes, if you go to our Hometown Heroes webpage, there is a donate button right on there.
And who, who's the donation made to?
It's made to, it's just a fund where we can use that.
Is it a city fund?
It's to the city.
Okay.
It's to our area, and then we can use that money to offset as the applications come in.
And so what is the cost of the banner today to?
$50.
$50. Okay, thank you.
But we will definitely look into more partnerships as well. Thank you for that. All right, well, then I'm going to turn it over to Michelle for the next performance measure.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I'm wondering if this is on here?
Here.
Thank you. I will be illustrating the number of persons served through service type for the programs and services that we fund through our CDPG, home, ESG, ESG COVID dollars, as well as the Human Services Funds. And on the screen, you will see these measures, and this represents up through the third quarter, or March of this year. From July of 2021 through March of this year, we have served a total of 139,725 individuals, which is 85% of the proposed goal from all of the agencies. Therefore, we are currently on track to meet this performance measure this year. And these critical services delivered include assistance for persons experiencing homelessness, food, basic needs, education and job training, youth services, health services, as well as rental assistance and home repairs. Typically, agencies meet or exceed their goals in the last quarter, by the last quarter of the year. So we tend to get more of the invoicing and the performance reporting with higher numbers that last quarter of the year. I would like to take the opportunity to just highlight a few of our excellent accomplishments this year in housing and community development. Through our ESG COVID dollars, we've expended over $3.7 million. We have assisted 3,600 persons who were experiencing homelessness, and they've obtained emergency shelter. 370 persons were housed through the rapid rehousing programs. And over 3,000 persons experiencing homelessness were engaged with navigators and provided resources such as housing, housing resources and referrals, food, obtaining IDs, birth certificates that they would need to get into shelters, as well as referrals for mental health, substance abuse, and finally, stable supportive housing. We have exceeded HUD's ESG COVID dollar expenditure requirement, which was spending 85% of the total grant by March 30th of 2022. We did receive those funds towards the beginning of 2021, so it was a short turnaround. That expenditure amount would have been 4.4 million, and we did exceed that. We have also exceeded the requirement to potentially spend all of our funds by September 30th, and the city could be qualified for additional funds through a reallocation process. And last but not least, one other great accomplishment is Housing and Community Development this year received no audit findings or concerns on our HUD monitoring for Davis Bacon labor standards for wages on public facility projects, as well as through the city's external audit of all of our federal grant programs. So we're really excited and proud of my team for that. And I will turn it back over to Ruth.
Michelle, maybe before we leave the topic. So I just want to say kudos again for the amazing way that we've been able to get money out the door and into the hands of folks and on the rental assistance, mortgage assistance, utility assistance, and I'm sure there's more to be said on that. But, so the question is, how, and I think we're up to like, what, $41 million at this point? I'm sure I'm behind.
Forty-five.
Forty-five. And I know counties and others are coming to us saying, you guys are better at this than we are, can we give you millions of dollars? And that's, so, I'm not exaggerating, am I? So, so, thank you, and congratulations, we're all amazed by that. How much longer can we, you mentioned September, we have to be done, are we done in September?
Mayor, for the ESG CV, the original final expenditure deadline was September 30th. Any funds that any jurisdictions didn't spend would be recouped. Recently, we received a notice that they're going to extend the expenditure deadline. A lot of agencies are having difficulty spending the money. But those who have spent 95% of their funds by June will be up for reallocation. So any of those agencies they take those funds from, they will look at those qualified agencies, and we will be one of them.
So how much, how much longer are we going to be able to have that room full of people answering phone calls and saying, yes, I can help you with your rent?
And those are actually a different bucket of money for Mary, and I just wanted to say, all of those great accomplishments you just mentioned were all of Mary's team.
Yes, right. Okay, so we're talking about a couple of different buckets of money here?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Okay. So what, and I apologize for being probably maybe the only one in the room who doesn't understand this. What, what dollars, what can I spend ESG COVID dollars on if it's not rental assistance? I guess that's emergency shelter, off the streets program, those types of things. For example, the motel room rental, is that funded through this program?
Part of it was, Mayor, yes. This is all for homeless assistance, this ESG fund, rapid rehousing, homeless prevention. So we've really done a lot in the last year and a half with those dollars.
So as opposed to being eviction assistance, eviction prevention, this is for folks that are already experiencing homelessness?
Correct. We did have 600,000 of CDBG funds that we were able to reallocate last year for our, we call it EFPP, but it's the Eviction Prevention and Mortgage Assistance Program. And I know Mary has blown through that money as well, so that's great. We got a lot of money out for assistance for that program.
So then that provokes a different round of questions. And how much longer are we going to, after September, are we going to need to curtail the off the streets program? And are we, is our motel program on hold?
Yeah, so that's a different bucket of dollars, right? And we're able to use both general fund and ARPA dollars for that. So we're using those ARPA funds to continue to keep those rooms up. And then there's other wraparound services that are also funded. So as far as we're concerned right now, as far as identified funding, that will continue for the next couple of years, two or three years.
Okay.
And established ones. That's separate than what they're funding over here. This is like more direct assistance to individuals who've experienced homelessness. We're trying to get them into more permanent, or at least some kind of temporary to eventually permanent housing, or providing immediate emergency relief for someone who can't pay their bills.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I know we were here in front of you for the Housing and Governing Board a few weeks ago, and so this is kind of the same things that we shared with you at that time. Our utilization, this is our vouchers that are under lease, are currently, we're at 91.2%. It continues to go down. There's a couple of reasons for that. We had added the 108 additional vouchers, so they're slowly getting leased up. So then you have a higher number that you're trying to lease up. Also, the gaps of the units that are out there, we know that the occupancy rate is very low for the city. But staff continues to work with landlords. We continue to outreach to find those opportunities to get our voucher holders leased up. So I, I feel comfortable that we will see this coming up soon, and we'll share that with you soon. Just a couple highlights that we want to share. We shared this with you before. We're in the HUD Landlord Task Guidebook. Mayor Giles is quoted in there. We're a high-performance agency since 2009. We've enhanced our service to our participants by having virtual briefings. We have recordings of briefings that we had done, so they don't have to come into the office with that. Coming soon will be the Housing Online Annual Recertification Portal. We're excited that they will be able to complete their annual recert paperwork at home with their tablet, their computer. They can come into our office and use our kiosk. They can go to the library and do the, use the computers there. So we're excited. That will be really a good enhancement for our program. We want to share with you that these were the mid-year adjustments that during this fiscal year that we're in today that were asked for. It was for three staff members that were, two of them were general fund and one was Community Development Program. This next slide is our budget adjustment request for this new budget fiscal year. These are three positions. They are all general fund positions, and we're going to go into detail with the next three slides for each of these, so we can answer your questions as we go through each of these. But it totals the $226,000. And I'm up first for this one. This is our Housing Solutions Program. We're asking for one staff person to administer this program, to oversee this program. They will be that one point of contact for the landlord. They will be doing the outreach. They will be doing the visits out to the landlords, potential current landlords. They will also be the, all of a sudden I just went blank. They'll process the incentives. Also, they're going to educate the landlords about our program, the benefits of our program, to help to increase that. This first slide on the left here, this is the number of landlords that we have made payments to. Some of these landlords get several payments, some get one payment. So if you see in the first one, the orange arrow, that is the 12 months. It was a 6% annual drop of the amount of landlords that we have. We started the program in the quarter three of 2021, and it took us those couple of months to get the program up and running. But the next two quarters, as you can see there, were stabilizing. You can see that we're pretty even. So we've lost some landlords, but we've gained some landlords. So the number of landlords in the last two quarters have been stabilizing. It just went down 1%. I feel like that's very good since it was very high the 12 months before that. The next slide we wanted to share is, this is just the number of incentive landlords that have received incentive, the HAP bonus, the Housing Assistance Bonus Payment. We, the reason we want to share this is 20 landlords. Some of them could have gotten more than one, because this is for every new lease up at their unit, 20 new landlords received that bonus. And we had 64 current landlords that have received this bonus. So we're, we're hoping that is retaining those landlords, and then we're hoping that that is also the incentive to have new landlords work with our program.
And just to add additional information, Mayor and Council, we had somebody in a temporary position that's been doing this. So we've seen that it's working, and, and so that's why we're asking that it just be a full-time position incorporated into our department moving forward.
I, I, I do have a question. And obviously, this marketing person is, is critical and it's a smart move. But with the, the pressure on recruiting landlords for these programs, is there a risk that we lower the bar and, and we start embracing, you know, low-quality housing, you know, because we're so desperate to have landlords in the program? What are the, what are the quality requirements? We don't have substandard housing, you know, that we're subsidizing?
Yeah, Mayor and, and councilmembers, no, we can't do that. We have the HUD regulation that it has to be decent, safe and sanitary housing, and are, they're even increasing the requirements of the inspections that'll be coming out soon. So we won't be able to...
So you already have the staffing to go out and do an inspection?
She has, she has staff to do that.
Yes, we have an inspector that does an annual inspection. We do an initial inspection when they move in, and then biannual inspection.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. The next position, the second adjustment request, is a new position. It's an animal control specialist. And it's a specialist two that would serve both in the office and out in the, in the field, really primarily handling the lower priority calls that then would allow the officers to concentrate on the high priority calls. We would have this person do more community outreach, spend more time with the residents, explaining to them, you know, what the ordinance offices are, how to license your pet and what have you. We also would be working internally with other departments with training as well. And we looked at, we have four officers out in the field, and they do about 54 high-priority cases a month with an average response time of 99 minutes. With this specialist position taking off some of those lower level calls, we could reduce that response time to 54 minutes. So it's quite a dramatic drop. So not only would it allow the ACOs to focus on priority calls, we can take more of that time to provide community engagement, which is so vital for them to understand what the rules are and what the laws are.
Mr. Luna.
Thank you, Ruth. Thank you, Ruth. I'm always impressed with your animal control specialists and what they do to the community. I'm not sure if a community realizes that we take that internally as a city, because we are dedicated and we want to make sure that we protect all our furry friends and others. So, so thank you for what you do for that in terms of animal control. Now, maybe if you could educate the public, how is it different from Maricopa County? I know that we get our licensing through Maricopa County, but the city of Mesa takes care of the animals within the city.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmember Luna. Actually, the county is, is the shelter part of this whole process. So we handle helping to get the animals from a home, or if the dog is at large, or if there are wildlife, wildlife animals go to a different place. And then the county, we take the animals to the county. If we cannot find the owners ahead of time, we do a lot of work beforehand to really get the animal where, back to their owners if, you know, before they even go to the county. So the county does the sheltering. And so that's the...
Ruth, what's about what that means today, though?
Where, where we have to go to make that happen?
Yes, right now. Well, actually, right now, so during COVID, the East Valley Shelter, the county closed our Mesa Shelter, and we had to go all the way to Maricopa. But now they have reopened, and we are able to go back nearby. So we do, we're constantly strengthening our relationship with the county and, and working to build that, especially things like ramp times and being able to, to access that, because sometimes we'll have a full truck by, you know, nine o'clock in the morning. So...
Are they opening up the new, are they construction, under construction of a new facility?
Yes. So they are building a new facility that will be down by where all the courts are, off Mesa Drive, south of the freeway. And they're still in process of building it. However, I, I was told that the capacity isn't growing from where they were before. It's just that they're providing safer conditions. And so their capacity isn't even growing at that point. But, so that's our relationship with the county.
Well, you not, you not only deal with, with cats and dogs, but you deal with other wildlife as well, right?
Horses.
Horses and goats.
I was gonna say domesticated livestock.
Domesticated livestock, snakes.
Where do they go?
They go, we, we find, we have a, well, they go to your, your farm. Quite often, they go temporarily to...
Shannon has called, and I appreciate that. I'm happy to house temporarily.
Temporarily until we can get them to a, a farm.
Sometimes it's necessary, just for convenience for staff to, to move, to move them out. So...
Yes. Thank you. We appreciate that.
She's welcome to call anytime.
She, yes. You are on speed dial.
Do you use, do you use the Arizona Department of Agriculture, the livestock inspector, Shannon?
We, we have some, yes.
Okay.
So that's good in the weeds.
Yeah.
With the new facility on Havelina, does that mean the, the Rio Salado facility is going away?
That's what they, well, they won't be...
Yeah. Well, they might use it for other means, but the actual sheltering will take place in that new building.
They're trying to consolidate, aren't they? Trying to consolidate all of these shelters?
Well, no, because their main shelter is way out on the west side. So they're gonna, that's their busiest shelter. I mean, we're busy too, but this shelter kind of is more for the, the Gila River community and, and the east side as well. But they do bring animals from the other shelter over as well.
I think it's trying to improve the conditions from what they have today.
Right. It's improving the conditions.
It's not good right now where they live.
No. Thank you. Our third and final adjustment request is our Heidi's Village Shelter contract. So this was a pilot program in July of 2021, and it was intended to support those individuals experiencing homelessness with providing an alternative place for their animals to go if they had animals. And it was very successful. We, it's part of our city's strategic plan for homelessness. It primarily supports the individuals going through our off-the-street programs, but we have helped those facing eviction as well. So it's both. And we have sheltered 26 pets, serving 12 residents during our pilot program. We would like to continue this program moving forward with a request of 70,000. We believe that we'll be able to serve 74 pets. However, if we're continually fine-tuning this program, and if we're able to streamline processes, we might be able to even help more pets with this funding.
This is an interesting model that I think we need to figure out how to crack this problem, right? Because that seems to be a real barrier in a lot of situations to getting people off the street is their relationship with their, I mean, that's their only family member at, at some point, right? So...
Yes, Mayor.
I don't, so the way this program works is we do separate them, but I guess with the, with the goal of reuniting them. Is that correct?
Correct.
Oh, yeah.
Correct. And then we also have rooms at the hotel that offer animals for, you know, we offer pet rooms as well, and we've included that. So if, if, if they're going to off-streets and there's rooms available, the pets stay with, with the owners. This is just an alternative, especially during the eviction moratorium lifting. We had quite a few calls. So we're able to help folks coming from different areas with this program. It's been, I don't remember exactly how we came up with this, but then we kept talking with Heidi's Village, and we really wanted to make it work, and it really has worked. We didn't know if people would be willing to have their pets somewhere else, but they would rather have them in a safe place, knowing that they can reunite with them. Our final slide is our expenditure and revenue summary. We have a total budget for 2223 of 56.6 million. Quite a lot of that, about 54 million of that, is our federal funding. However, 2.5 million is our general fund, and that money goes a long way to support our mission and purpose of supporting, educating and engaging our residents. The first three lines are our general fund. We have an increase in the admin general fund because we did add to support personnel during this year. Our animal control budget has stayed consistent. Our community engagement budget, we had an increase from 2122 to this year because we were able to fill the two vacant community engagement coordinator positions. In our grant section, that's both our housing authority and our community development. We do anticipate the additional 1 million in funding for next year is due to the additional housing vouchers we received. And then for community development, it is approximately 6.5 million in funding. We always have that carryover amount, too, that goes over to the next year, and that carryover amount is 10 million. And that ends our presentation. If you have any additional questions.
Thank you. Council, any questions for these ladies? Thank you. I'll just...
I do. So going back to slide five, up at the top it says, person served 139,725 over that July 2021 through 2022, or March 2022. How many of those 139,000 people were actual Mesa residents?
Mayor, Council, those are all Mesa residents.
They're all Mesa residents?
They are required to serve Mesa residents. They are unduplicated, with the exception of human services funding. We don't necessarily track unduplicated because somebody could go for a food box and need another food box in three weeks. The unduplicated requirement is for our federal programs.
Is there, and I ask because 139,000, I mean, that's more than a fifth of our population of Mesa. Are you able to break that 139,000 down into specifics of what each of the categories, I guess?
If you look down below...
Is that what, is that what those, what those bars are?
So the largest number of that, which you see is food basics, right, Michelle?
Correct.
And so, like Michelle said, that could happen, it could be the same family getting food every week for, I don't know how long, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Yes, that's correct.
So, when you say duplicate, you know, I
Yes, it's a non-duplicate.
I mean, it's not, they may have received, well, they may have received multiple services, the same family during this time period.
Okay. Is there a way to break that out so that we can see how many? It's concerning. I mean, because if it truly is a fifth of our population, there's some underlying issues there that we probably should be looking at and figuring out, A, is there something else that needs to be done versus just throwing money at it? Is there, is there a bigger root problem to this that we're not seeing?
Out of the 139,000, if I'm reading this correctly, there was 112,000, so 113,000 where it's just the food part in itself, right? And again, that could have been, I don't know, it could have been only 10% of that number were actually unique families if they came in multiple times during that period to get a food box, right? If they were hungry in July, they're probably hungry in August, September, October. But this just counts that family each time they came to get help. So, we don't, I don't know that we have a way to parse that out, or do we?
Mayor, counsel, the difficult piece, there are two specific agencies that are food distribution. One of the agencies, they do serve clients directly, but they also provide food to nonprofits to then distribute to their clients, individuals who come to them. So, they're, they could be counted duplicate. Somebody could come directly to the agency that distributes the food, and then maybe they're going through the off-the-streets program, and they're getting wraparound services, and that agency also gives them food. So, I'm able to break it down for the unduplicated for all of the federal programs. I could tell you exactly how many of those were. But for the agencies like the food services, it's very difficult. And we've had conversations with the agency, and it's almost impossible for them to
Well, and I think they sent an email to the mayor and council from a specific individual talking about the frustration he had, because we were pushing to try to get that information. And I think for them, logistically, it's just very difficult. We need more information than we were getting from them. But even to get to that level, you could, if you read the email, you could hear his frustration about getting to that level of detail. So, to your point, I think the one thing this does show is food by far is the greatest need, right? Well, we see that, obviously, during that period of time. I don't, I don't even want to try to venture, you know, does that represent 10% of those are the same family? I don't, I don't think we know. But that, just to give you a sense of, they're probably hungry in July, they're probably hungry through most of that period. So, I, I understand what you're asking for, but even those agencies are, for them, as they've expressed the ability for them to keep track of that, because they kind of have a policy, if you're hungry, we're going to give you food regardless. So
And mayor and council, Councilmember Thompson, if you look at the chart on the screen, you notice that the largest number proposed is through the food services at 125,000. And if you look at some of the categories, such as the workforce development, the proposed is 24. So, those 24, we're very likely to be able to track those unduplicated, doing one-on-one services, resume building. And then if you look at some of the other categories, such as health services, that's 400 individuals proposed. So, you can notice that that number's probably being skewed specifically by the food services.
And I would venture to say, for all the other categories, you could give us the name and address, too, right? Because you're, that's, for tech, workforce development, we know who, we know the names, we know where they live. It's probably the food that's probably skewing this more than anything else.
It'd be interesting to, to normalize that, I guess, to see what it's doing over time. Because, I mean, I saw that number, 139,000 people.
Yeah.
And I'm like, wow, that's, that's a huge portion of our population.
Yeah. But again, it's not, it's duplicated probably by the same family multiple times during that time period for food, for food.
Okay, thank you.
Just one more thing, mayor and council, Councilmember Thompson. My assumption is, in talking with the agency for the food services, they're probably counting the boxes that are going out. So, you know, somebody could be coming back several months in a row for boxes. So, that person may get five boxes, so they're counting five clients.
Okay, thank you. Does that complete your presentation?
Yes.
Thank you. Well, again, you're doing the Lord's work. We appreciate you. You're a lot of, you know, hundreds of thousands of people are, are joining us and saying thank you. So, keep up the good work.
Thank you very much, counsel.
Next on our agenda is item 2B, here presentation and provide direction on arts and culture development, arts and culture department budget. Ilya and Cindy, good to have you with us.
I think we can leave in like 10 minutes. Is there anybody else that can, we have a call?
You have to leave.
I can change.
The vice mayor needs to leave in about 10 minutes, but I don't think we have anything left to vote on. But wait, you know what? If you don't mind, please stay right there. But we're going to skip to agenda item three. That's to acknowledge receipt of minutes. Let's do that, make sure we have a call present for that. Is there a motion to that effect? Thank you, Mr. Freeman, seconded by Mr. Luna. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes with the five of us that are here. Mr. Horetti had to leave for a Valley Metro meeting, and as we know, Ms. Spillsbury is excused. I think that's everything that we need a vote on. So, if the vice mayor needs to leave, please don't be offended. She's got important business as well. Take it away.
Good morning, Mayor Giles, council members, Mr. Brady. My name is Cindy Ornstein. I'm Director of Arts and Culture for the City of Mesa, and I have with me the Assistant Director of the Department of Arts and Culture, Ilya Riske, and we'll try to be snappy, upbeat, and get through this. I know it's late. I, I do want to mention that Jared Bitner, the Director of Idea Museum, is here behind us, and Allison Stoltman, the interim Director of the Arizona Museum of Natural History, is not well today, but I know she is watching at home. So, we thank her for participating that way. And just a big, huge thank you to our amazing staff for all their great work and getting through what has been a challenging time, as we all know. And we want to start by thanking you for your encouragement, for your support, for showing up at our events and activities, which means a lot to staff, for you to see firsthand what we do, and for providing the leadership you do. We really appreciate it. And I'm very pleased to say that arts and culture in Mesa are making a comeback, and demand is high and increasing, and we're very excited about the coming year. Next. So, we want to start with our department's purpose. We're in strategic planning for the department right now, but our current mission statement is to strengthen the creative, social, and economic fabric of our community and region through inspiring, relevant, fun, and transformational experiences. And I think it's, it is important to note that there is direct and indirect impact on all six of the council's strategic priorities, from providing outlets for vulnerable populations, to enhance community safety and community well-being, to working in neighborhoods to build cohesion and civic pride, to providing programs that support creative placemaking and economic activity. Ilya?
Thank you, Cindy. This slide shows the level of participation as one of our metrics at AZMNH, Arizona Museum of Natural History, over the past five years. So, at the Department of Arts and Culture, all three of our institutions measure participation in the same manner. Participants, the number of participants represent the number of visits to each of our organizations, to either attend art classes, to see a performance or event, or to visit one of our museums. This is the industry standard of measuring activity throughout arts institutions. At the Arizona Museum of Natural History, we've had reduced participation, of course, due to COVID over the last two fiscal years. However, this year, we've had a very strong return. We're currently projecting 86% of pre-COVID attendance levels by the end of this fiscal year, and we expect that to continue to return next year as well. At the Idea Museum, we've also seen a return, a reduction in participation due to COVID over the past few years, but we're also returning pretty strongly there as well. We're, we're expecting to be at 58% of our pre-COVID level of participation. Children's museums across the country have been experiencing similar reductions in attendance due to the patrons, the five and under not being able to get vaccines. However, compared to the national average, Idea Museum is doing better, and we are continuing to see those, those patrons, young kiddos come back.
Are there any capacity limitations on either the Natural History Museum or the Idea Museum at this point?
There are none.
Okay.
At Mesa Arts Center, we're seeing our audience, patrons, and students return as well. We've had a bit of a rocky reopening for our theaters due to the Omicron variant this past winter, as we've had some cancellations and rescheduling of events. However, since, those have leveled out, and we're optimistic for increased activity next fiscal year. We're projected to be at 56% of our pre-COVID level by the end of this fiscal year of participation from Mesa Arts Center. Cindy?
Thank you, Ilya.
Cindy, mayor, you know, I, I value the MAC Center, and I signed up for several of the shows, and they were canceled. So, I look forward to being rescheduled in the future, go down there quite often. So, I'm keeping an eye on it, let's put it that way.
Great. Well, we're very much hoping, hoping not to experience any of that next year. I wanted to set the context for our, our budget. First of all, it's important to note that we received some significant federal support in the form of the shuttered venue operators grant for $4.2 million, and that's made a big difference in our ability to sustain and invest in our facility and programs coming out of COVID. So, as you'll see in the course of this presentation, there are dollars in our budget from expenses that were able to be displaced by that, that grant money, that have allowed us to support, from our own sources and revenues, some needed maintenance, invest in one-time operational and infrastructure improvements, and also to invest in future stability and income production. So, so for those, which are the majority of, of what we're presenting today, for those, we are only seeking the expense capacity approval. Next year's budget, in terms of the value proposition we're, we're pursuing, seeks sustainability and to maximize earned and contributed income growth. You will see that we are investing in positions and programs that will either immediately or will gradually produce greater income to support core programs, new opportunities, and of course, to increase our community impact. And we'd like to give you a few highlights, some highlights from this past year, but particularly, yeah, thank you, particularly some things that have happened recently that you might not know about, and we'll tick through these pretty quickly. At the Idea Museum, you see a beautiful new mural in, that is almost complete in the atrium of Idea Museum, but it is much more than just a mural. This is an interactive and accessible feature, and it is that because it is a multisensory, it will be a multisensory mural. There will be aspects of it that have texture you can touch, there will be smell, there will be sound, there will be elements that, that cause colors to move across the mural as the sun moves during the day. And so, there will be ways for different people with different abilities to appreciate and engage. And this will be expanded further to, to additional parts of the atrium and even the outside of the building. Next. In Arizona Museum of Natural History, if you visit today, you'll see this beautifully refreshed Dino Mountain, a central feature in the museum that people love, and where there's new plants, there's new paint, there's some new creatures, and a couple of additional creatures on order. I want to particularly call out the, the, the cat that you see there on the branch. That's, that is a Homo therium, a saber-tooth predator from 2.5 million years ago. What's really cool is that AZMNH field research contributed to the knowledge about this animal for the scientific field. So, it's really wonderful to feature it at Dino Mountain. And a big thanks to Benji Pezno on our exhibit team, who's an amazing paleo artist, who, who created that creature. Next. Of course, you all know, we had an amazing Dia de los Muertos this year, as always, but bigger than ever at 30,000, and I'd be remiss not to, to recognize again that this festival did get the National League of Cities Cultural Diversity Award for large cities, and we are so appreciative for that recognition. Next. And finally, on the highlights, we wanted to share this fun little story about Enchroma glasses at Mesa Contemporary Arts Museum, and we have a short video to share on that. If it will play. Actually, it doesn't look like it's live. So, all right, then I will tell the story, which is Enchroma allows people with color blindness to see color in the norm, in the normal spectrum. And the rollout was quite extraordinary. These are glasses that we now own, that we have forever for people who are colorblind to enjoy the art. But what was super cool was, in this case, that we had an exhibit by a man who has two children who are colorblind, who had never before been able to see his artwork as he painted it. And we were lucky enough to have the news media come and cover the first time they saw, they saw the color in their dad's picture. It was such an incredible story, and we'll send you the link so you can see the story. But it was picked up nationally. It was in over a dozen markets. It was picked up by CNN, and it was a viral social media post. So, it got a lot of attention. And now, I'll turn it back over to Ilya.
Thank you. In support of council's climate action plan, we've incorporated several projects to support water stewardship, air quality improvement, and energy conservation. First, we're going to work with the city's environmental and sustainability division to help us with energy audits of our three facilities so that we can identify places that we can help conserve energy through improvements to our facilities. At MAC, we have several lighting projects in process to install LED. We're also planning to replace a few smaller sections of grass on campus with artificial turf in order to conserve water and reduce maintenance costs. At AZMNH, facilities maintenance and our team just recently completed a project to upgrade lighting fixtures, again, installing LED to improve efficiency. And at Idea Museum, although there's no bullet there, we are working and focused on incorporating energy-efficient fixtures and LED to the extent possible in the upcoming bond renovation project.
And the funds for that have already been set aside.
So, now we're going to get into the budget adjustment requests. I'd like to point out here that this slide is our only general fund budget request. Now that we're fully open again, our operations team at MAC is struggling to keep up with supporting the increased activity throughout our campus. Our budget plan includes hiring three new staff to support that increased activity. Our plan includes a new community events position to manage our four annual festivals each year, as well as to support a variety of other public events, including our work to support other city-run events. Our main festivals, of course, include Dia de los Muertos, our season kickoff festival, Spark Youth Media Festival, and the Emerge Festival in partnership with ASU. Our plan also includes adding a service worker assistant and facilities tech one position. Mesa Arts Center's operations team performs all the custodial duties across MAC's campus, as well as supports facilities maintenance, as we both work together to keep our facility maintained and looking Both of these positions will help us continue to hold events, stay on top of our campus maintenance, and keep everything up and running smoothly. Next, this request, as well as all of the subsequent ones, are supported by earned and contributed resources to the arts and culture fund, so non-general fund requests. Our plan includes one new gallery educator, lead gallery educator for Arizona Museum of Natural History. As you saw earlier, our admissions are increasing, and our admissions revenues at AZMNH are exceeding forecasts this fiscal year. Our attendance is up, and the increased attendance and the need to better support our customers has really driven our request here to hire visitor services staff support. A lot of the increased attendance is happening on the weekends, and this position would support our visitor services staff on the weekends. Cindy?
Thank you, Ilya. We are looking to increase our art class participation and also really stabilize We are looking to increase our art class participation and also really stabilize staffing. Like so many others, it's been very difficult to hire and retain part-time staff in this current marketplace. And so we've been working, and you'll see some other places where we're doing that, to try to shore that up and give the stability because of the enormous drain of constantly rehiring. In this case, the increase of part-time to full-time and also increasing hours for some part-time positions will enable us to both increase offerings that are in great demand. Many of our classes sell out extremely quickly to very disappointed students, and so we'll be able to increase the offerings and, at the same time, increase our earned revenues in the studios. Next. Thank you. We are also, this is really an exciting thing, we have a small but mighty development team across the department, but they have so much on their plates, and we know we're missing opportunities. Even though we've grown our corporate sponsorship quite a bit in recent years, we know there's so many that we don't get to reach out to. So we are using the reserves to invest in greater production of sponsorship income across the department. So this will be a position that serves all three venues, and we are investing some of those reserves to subsidize this position in decreasing amounts each year for three years, with the idea that this gives that person time to cultivate and grow the sponsorships to cover their salary, as well as developing additional funds for our programming. So it'll be a win-win to tap great untapped opportunities and to cultivate new relationships in the community. Next. And then, in youth participation, we have robust programs serving youth. Project Lit is a great example, and one that has taken off again, and Gangbusters coming back live. We are also looking at some fee-for-service income from the public schools to help us expand youth programming, and so these positions will really allow us to achieve those goals of expanding Project Lit and also rebuilding our youth studio classes, which we think are a big need in the community and will complement other classes and opportunities for youth in the downtown area. So we're very excited about that. Ilya?
Thank you, Cindy. This slide shows our mid-year budget adjustments in fiscal '21-'22. This fiscal year, we requested $662,000 in expenditure capacity to support our one-time capital needs across Mesa Art Center. So this represents tapping into the fund balance that we have now over at Arts and Culture Fund. These one-time capital needs include replacement of lighting and sound consoles in our theaters, as well as some minor and major cosmetic repairs across MAC's campus.
And if I can, just insert here that the new marketing communication specialist is being treated exactly like the sponsorship position, because they will enhance earned revenue, so we're subsidizing that in decreasing amounts over the three years as well, while they grow the earned revenue to support their position and our programs.
And that fund that you're drawing down from is accumulated through tickets?
This is the reserves that we've been able to do because of the offset expenses from our shuttered Venue Operators Grant that I mentioned earlier, which is, was a boon for bringing, which, as it was intended, for bringing us back to stabilization and dealing with some of these things that needed to be tended to.
So like most other city departments, as Cindy mentioned, we're experiencing the same challenges with hiring. We found that full-time positions are more attractive to job seekers and provide better stability for our teams, since we made the additional three changes there, conversion of two part-time usher positions into one full-time position in our theaters. Uschers are lead house managers who manage the front of house. We've converted four part-time positions into three full-time positions at box office, and converted six temporary instructors into part-time, non-benefited positions in our studios program.
Yeah, and if I can just insert that Ilya mentioned the house managers, these are the, you may be curious, because you know our uschers are volunteers, these are the staff positions that supervise the volunteer uschers.
So the additional staff positions you just went over, does that take you back to pre-COVID staffing levels, or is this above and beyond where we once were?
It's above and beyond where we once were.
Yes, some of it is bringing us back, and some of it is over and above to really put us in a position for maximizing, it's all focused on maximizing income.
Our fiscal '22-'23 budget plan also includes some one-time expenditures to improve operational stability. We've budgeted $642,000, again, using the Arts and Culture Fund balance to support the following. Some of the major highlights here are the software upgrades, which include a website refresh across each of our three institutions, hiring a strategic planning consultant to help each of our institutions with strategic planning over the course of the next fiscal year, as well as new museum collection management software for Museum of Natural History and the Mesa Contemporary Arts Museum. This last slide shows our expenditure and revenue summary. As you can see here, we're expecting our revenues to fully return and in some place exceed our last full fiscal year of activity before COVID. We've highlighted the column second from the left, which is 1819's year-end actuals, and then highlighted '22-'23's proposed budget. We've done that because 1819 was the last full fiscal year of activity prior to COVID, so 1920 is not shown on this chart, but we can provide.
It was very small.
So we felt that that was the most accurate comparison to have year-over-year. Overall, the difference between fiscal '21-'22 and '22-'23 budgets is $3 million. Of the $3 million, $1.2 million is one-time investments in capital infrastructure, as well as operational sustainability, as we've shown in the previous slides. $800,000 is an increase to our Performing Live program, which is directly supported by revenue that comes from having those performances. And $1 million is attributed to the mid-year adjustment 5% salary increase across all city staff, as well as the salary, or the additional positions seen earlier in the presentation.
And that is it, and we're happy to entertain any questions, although at this late hour, we completely understand if that is not desired.
Sorry.
We still got questions for you. Mr. Freeman?
So on Slide 16, when you talk about school participation and increasing the students in participating, what was it prior to, I hate talking about COVID, but prior to that, what was the participation?
Well, one of the challenges is that this is talking about individual students, and much like your discussion in housing, we actually count visits. And so this will increase the number of students, but for instance, in Project Lit, they have 16 to 20 experiences over the course of the program, or even actually probably more like 24, and each of those is a visit. Our school participation in normal times at Mesa Art Center, our youth and school participation is somewhere around 45,000 visits. Now, that translates to, obviously, a smaller number, especially in a program like Project Lit, but we service, in a normal year, many thousands of students, because classical music inside out goes into the schools all the time, and Project Lit goes into the schools and visiting artists do, not to mention a number of other youth programs. So we do service many thousands of students, but this starts nudging it up, and the visits, if counted, would be an even bigger number.
Okay, because I was just thinking, do you have the capacity to, you know, have this class participation at the MAC for these type of activities? But obviously, you do, because you're ramping this all up, and based on your comments, you had many more thousands of students prior.
Right, and remember, some of these are programs where we go to the schools. Project Lit, we go to the schools, it's an after-school program, but the youth studios program is something that got really greatly reduced back in the Great Recession, and we, it's the one area where we didn't have any specialists on staff, they were all adjunct professors, teachers. And by getting a youth studios coordinator, we're planning to rebuild the youth studios program, so there is quite a lot of capacity, and we really have learned a lot through our school programs that we can apply to our youth studio programs at MAC.
Does Mabel participate in this?
Mabel participates sometimes at the schools, not so much, I mean, on campus.
Well, I meant at the school.
Oh, yes, Mabel goes to schools sometimes for events. It's particularly well-suited when there's a big event at a school where we can be part of that, so Mabel has visited schools, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And for those who don't know what Mabel is, who are watching, that's our Mobile Arts-Based Engagement Laboratory that goes out into the community to bring studio experiences to the public.
I'm excited to see the mural at the IDEA Museum, that looks really impressive, so.
Spectacular. The first wall is, they're still are needing to add some of the other sensory experiences, but then they're going to expand it to the opposite, it's so, everybody loves it so much, it's going to expand to the other side of the wall, and actually onto the wall outside, I believe facing Robeson, so that there's a bit of that excitement on the outside of the building. And I know Jared has lots of plans for additional exciting interactives to bring more life to the outside of the building, so people understand the experience on the inside.
Wonderful, and this isn't part of the bond expansions, this is just kind of normal upgrades.
Jared's not waiting for that, he's just doing it.
Yeah, no, Jared has some grant monies that he's been able to use for this project, and also, we were lucky enough, thank you to Mr. Brady, to have a recommendation for some funding in CIP for a new interactive element on the front of the building as well.
Well, and just finding artists that can do, this is pretty amazing, that we have artists that are in the area that can do this kind of thing.
Yeah, there are fantastic artists in the region, we're very lucky.
Well, the IDEA Museum and then the Natural History Museum, with the addition to the dinosaur exhibit, I think that's very exciting. The kids who have seen these multiple, multiple times, it's gonna, it's a whole new reason to come back and have a new experience. And to the bond project, I guess I'm just, I'm concerned that costs are skyrocketing, obviously, and that $5 million is, buying, you know, potential of that is shrinking every day, so I'm just hoping that we can figure out a way to pay for something, you know, $5 million.
Yes, because the, as you know, Mayor and Council, the, because of the staffing shortages out in the world, there have been some hiccups in terms of getting our cost estimate for how far the $5 million bond will go for the infrastructure that's needed for the expansion. We are this close, I think next week, we're supposed to get that cost estimate. That will allow us to know how much remains in the bond money, as well as, there is a planned $5 million capital campaign, as you know, as you well know, and so, understanding what the remainder of the money will be able to purchase is a key factor in kicking off the capital campaign. But I believe the intention is to go right in as quickly as is feasible to starting the infrastructure improvements, so that we can avoid further price increases.
Great, well, I'm looking forward to just coming out and posting on this, this might be the new Insta-wall in Mesa, where you're gonna want to have your photos taken, so it looks great. Mr. Thompson?
My only question is on the, looking at the expenditures and revenues, what is the, so on our revenue side, the Mesa Art Center, 1819 actuals, 2.7 revenue, 9.7 expense, and then proposed budget is 2.7 revenue and 11.7, or, yeah, 11.7 expenses. Is there anything that we can do to kind of close that gap?
Actually, what I need to point out, because it is a little confusing, I'm sorry, but there are two lines for Mesa Art Center, there's the Mesa Art Center line and the Performing Live line, which we broke out because it's such a large piece.
Right, well, and those, the Performing Live, I mean, it doesn't concern me that much, because your revenues are 4.2, but your expenses are 3.4, so it's basically coming itself.
Oh, I see, you were just looking at that single line item.
Yeah, so it's paying for itself, and I understand from the cultural side, you know, that we subsidize the cultural activities in our community, as we should, but what I'm concerned with is that huge gap between expenses and revenue for the Mesa Art Center, is that because we're paying to replace all the seats, I mean, what all is encapsulated in that Mesa Art Center expense that we're not getting from the revenue side?
Yeah, there is a big chunk that is those one-time expenses we were speaking about.
Yeah, $1.2 million of the 11.7 is one-time expenditures, and so that brings it down significantly. And then, once you factor in the $8.9 million in general fund support that we receive, it balances out.
So is there anything that we can do on the revenue side to bring that up?
Absolutely.
So that, they're never going to offset each other, but to close that gap, so we're not pulling so much from the general fund?
We are continually working, and Ilya is doing a fantastic job with his team at looking at both savings on the expense side, as well as increasing income, and there are a number of initiatives and strategies underway and in planning for increased revenues. Do you want to add to that?
No, absolutely, yeah, we're always focused on looking at where we have room, comparing what we're charging across our department, and how that compares to the rest of the arts industry and other city, similar groups across the valley, to make sure that we're not pricing ourselves out of the market, but that we're also being competitive and making sure that we're getting as much bang for our buck, as it were.
Perfect, thank you.
Great, any other questions? All right, thanks again, we're very proud of your whole division, and the Art Center, the IDEA Museum, the Natural History Museum, thanks for making us proud.
Thank you very much, Mayor and Council.
Thank you, we already took care of our action items, so the next item is current event summary. Council, anything you'd like to share? I know we're short on time, I'll just quickly say Dobson Ranch HOA meeting was yesterday, so just a great opportunity for us to recommit to that great relationship we've had, and some great events last week, having to do with the Mesa United Way 100 Year Celebration and Earth Day, so thanks to everyone who worked on that. Mr. Brady, what does our schedule of future meetings look like?
Again, we'll continue conversations on the budget, so on Monday, so we'll have again, an early start at 4:30, I believe Parks Recreation Commercial Facilities is up for their presentation, so.
Great, thank you. Tomorrow morning, 7:30, we're having our annual interfaith breakfast, so if you're a faith leader or a nonprofit leader, we hope you'll come to breakfast at the Rendezvous Building tomorrow morning, we're going to talk about a variety of important topics. That concludes everything on our agenda for this meeting, is there a motion adjourned? Mr. Freeman, Mr. Luna, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, we are adjourned.